So, I mean, is that, is your answer then that they're single story? Okay. That was my question. May, but I don't see it jumping out at me on the, in the, what I'm reading. It may be in there somewhere, but I don't see it.
And that was part of the consideration of why they were adopting this.
And the parking should be four to six cars prevailing in the lot. And there would also be street parking on other streets and Main Street.
Okay. Just out of, again, I was not at the zoning, where this was zone, recommendation was made. Is it, is there any renderings or anything of what they're going to look like? Are they brick? Are they vinyl siding? What, what is the makeup of them?
No one.
Okay.
The front building will be brick, front facing Main Street.
Okay.
The back building will be brick halfway up that matches the other building.
Okay.
And the rest of it will be cement, what is it called?
Okay, okay.
Which our contractor highly recommended for noise and the fact of their community.
Uh huh, sure.
I, I don't have a problem with it because there are so many homes on Main Street as there is. Um, I was kind of, I noticed that the corridor plan, I guess, only applies to 39 and not Main Street. No surprise about that.
Well, the other option is at least two of those apartments are handy, will be built handicap accessible.
Oh, I understand.
And they're best in town now. Well, there's none in our township that are handicap accessible. Ground floor parking, not in town.
That is good.
I make a motion to accept the findings, the recommendation. Anybody in the commission?
All set.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Lawn care bids.
Mary Ann, you saw all the bids in person. Was there anything that you wanted to suggest as the town manager?
I think they all look really good. On the second page, if you're a daughter, I put in one of my lowest bid, highest bid. Everyone but Parks gave us a current bid. Parks gave us a bid for the entire season. So I broke it down based on the 29 week mowing season. And that's how I came up with the numbers. If we had a drought, we could end up with a lower for, for the season. But if we had a lot of rain and had mow more than once a week, we can end up paying more.
Is this going to include all the colors as well too, like, especially like Baltimore?
All, or whatever was on the, so.
Okay.
And it includes the park area, correct? And the fence that we had, you know, the complaints about the lack of weed eating and, and tidiness of, it includes that as well?
I did not specify the fence, but in the park area, the fence is in the park. And it needs to have weed control around it. I can address that over time.
Do they also do like the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
And the pump stations in town?
And they do the lot that is in between the bank and the postal office.
That was good. They never did.
Home station.
Yeah, I, I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that been noticed for years is that they never trim it.
That was partly why we went to bid on the last page of that little packet. I took a week and a day minute for those one more seasons.
Uh huh.
These bids are probably a bit higher than what their bids are, but it doesn't mean it's always trimming. And weed control.
When they say weed control, are they talking about spraying the whole park area and such, or is it?
Control is mainly in the ground areas.
So what?
Okay.
And then along the side of the road, like on both sides of the legislature.
Okay.
And then over by the.
Okay.
My neighbors have heard of the bid. That's right, they didn't bid.
How soon do we have to have these in?
Um, the whole season is going to start in, before our next meeting.
Uh huh.
I asked.
Most of, most of them start on Monday.
I did reach out to our, our director of the UBS in 2024. Asked, told him we were going to bid, asked if they would like to bid, if that's possible.
I mean, those bid that you've come up with for, for 29 weeks, I see as, as Edwards. I, have you gotten any, I mean, do you know of anybody that's used any of these others at all?
I do not.
I mean, I know Mr. AJ mows my lawn, so I have that. I know about his work. And I'm sure Parks does a lot of that stuff as well too, so. But I've just never heard of the other.
Grounds mows a ton.
Do they?
A ton.
But I've never heard of Edwards at all before, so. If there's a difference, it's only a couple of, only a thousand or whatever. I might go with somebody you know about.
All are, we have certificate, certificate of insurance and we all are appropriately vetted that way?
We did for Parks, the other was that they would supply everything after.
Okay.
I would, I wouldn't be looking at, at Parks then, just looking at the money involved. Or, I mean, like I said, I can be persuaded. You've evidently had dealings with grounds before?
Yes, yeah, I know them, they come to my work all the time.
Okay. Did you do a pretty good job?
Oh, yeah. And he actually had the, I think he actually had the bid before the last guy got it.
Oh, okay.
So he's mowed from the town before.
He has mowed the town before?
Yeah.
Name sounded familiar. It's long was like.
They mowed before the last two years.
Oh, before then?
Yeah.
I have a little bit different opinion. I think they all, I know them all.
Oh, okay. Good reminder to hear that.
I know, I'm like.
Is that good or bad?
That's why they all did sealed bids, because I didn't want to know what they were going to bid. But I feel like if it's a thousand dollars cheaper, that we should allow the lowest bidder. That's why we did the bids that way.
Uh huh.
And so I feel like we allow the lowest bidder. And if we have issues or if we run into problems, we can always cancel the contract. But I would have a real hard time picking parks or grounds.
Yeah.
When they're completely even and just, you know, just picking, like, that's. To me, there's a clear dollar winner, so I feel like that's what we should do.
But the, the other thing also, and I have to go along with what, what I'm saying as well too. If you know what somebody's work has been as well too, it's not that much different. Also, that's something else I consider because as you, well, you were on the council, but, I mean, I'm sure everybody else remembers that we had an issue with a snow rule that got something that did a lousy job. And we gave him a third chance and, you know.
Right.
So.
That's just my personal opinion. Like, I don't know, parks and grounds both, both run big companies.
They do.
I can't say that I can pick one or the other. I think that I can absolutely eliminate the last two based on the difference in cost.
Yeah, I agree too.
So that's just my opinion, I.
I want to stay neutral. I don't want to vote, to be honest with you.
Because you have, like, would be.
That's a normal too.
Accusing yourself.
But, yeah. Four of you can vote.
That happens in small towns, for sure.
I mean, me and Justin's best of friends and Brad Burgess, Allen's boy, so.
Yeah, I didn't know you and Justin were good friends.
Yeah. So I don't really want to vote, to be honest with you.
You can, you can do that.
Well.
You can abstain as little.
Yeah, abstain.
The guy, just recently, he, he mows my lawn and I hate to think that I'd be saying voting him off.
He mows my lawn too.
So what, are you all accusing yourself? We don't.
He's the highest one.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
He's the highest.
That's the guy that mows my yard.
I, I don't have a, a horse in the race, I guess, so to speak.
But what's your make a recommendation?
I'm going to make a recommendation that we go with Edwards Lawn and Land, just because there's a low bidder. If we have issues, we will put it back to bid a year from now, or less than a year from now. But we will, I think it's fair to, what Tammy already said, we did a sealed bid for a reason. There's a low bidder, and I will say this, I make that motion based on them providing proper certificate of insurance and those documents, those documents. And assuming those all meet our requirements, then I make a motion that we accept Edwards Lawn and Land for the lawn mowing and landscaping care that pertains to that.
All set. All right.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who abstain? Okay, carries four to one.
No, it's four zero.
Yeah, he doesn't go against.
Oh, I don't have to re.
No, he just doesn't sign, he, he'll put.
Okay.
He's right, abstaining.
Uh, no, I'm a part of.
I know some, not all of them, so. He just wasn't those.
All right. Consider quotes to have an onsite box for shredding documents.
I'd like to, you know that UPS goes ahead and shreds documents. All we have to do is take them there and go shred.
Well, I, I haven't seen a quote yet, but.
I just know that we've done that before, when I've taken documents over to the UPS over there in Mooresville. And I can't remember how much it costs, but I would bet that they'll shred them rather than have a box out there. I just thought that we might be, a lot of.
They do get very cute little thick little blocks that have a lock on it. Because once things went into it, they would not be attached to it. They were, and they, some of them shred on site, others give you a document that they shred.
Is there?
The only reason that we're asking is that they give off this is, I mean, a lot of you haven't seen our four year downstairs. It is packed. Um, we have permits dating back to when we first started issuing permits in Baker Foss. It's just stacked up in there. Um, right now, the land office has six boxes because I have nowhere to put them. So they're stacked in the land office. Um, I don't want to put it on the floor because it's concrete floor, it's all moisture. Um, so I've just left them in their office.
But that's shredding, that's not, you're not shredding?
They're are more recent and they need to be fired until the retention period is up. But we have them dating back to when homes had, or garages. I have lots too with this garbage, with a fat permit, the complete permit. And most of them are, have been damp, so they're frigled, they're still moist because they're downstairs and that room. We just have a lot of documents.
But wouldn't that be like, if, once you have clearance to get rid of all those things, wouldn't they bring a truck here and put all that in it all one time? We didn't, wouldn't need monthly ongoing if you do that.
They could, but we were just thinking, because we don't have someone to go down there and go through it and look back at days and see what's in it, that we can slowly, like, in each office, say, we have to go down once a week and get rid of a box and go through it.
So we're, I'm going through a move at my facility and we're getting rid of a lot of documents. We, we always have. So we have a box that we keep always. Um, I don't recommend shred it. They are not good to deal with, so I would knock them out of the running, just based on personal experience. Another vendor that I think is very good and very affordable is Iron Mountain. I don't know if you checked with them.
I have no idea. UPS uses.
So, um, a couple of things. One is, um, there are, you know, to what Tammy said, we could just, for this type of a situation where you have a lot of documents that need disposed of all at one time, I do think having them come and just take them all to get rid of those is a great idea. Um, and then for an ongoing situation, I think we should consider whether you need a box. I don't think it's a bad idea. And then, you know, like, Iron Mountain will bring like a, you know, big, big rolling trash can that's lockable for, you know, what we're doing right now is, you know, getting rid of a lot of stuff. We, we fill up one of those smaller boxes pretty quick. So there's all kinds of ways to approach it. Um, I don't think it's opposed, I think, you know, are we going to use enough to warrant the monthly pickup? I don't know. You, you would be better to know that. The other thing, just to quickly add on, I think we should consider maybe getting into a situation where we're scanning some of our documents as well, so that, one, we can have them, you know, for perpetuity somewhat if we need them. But also some things we do want to get rid of if we don't have to retain it. Um, but also just to reduce the accumulation of, of things. But I don't think it's a bad idea to have something here, because making trips to Mooresville is going to add up time and fuel and, and that. So I think having it here onsite and having people come here onsite makes best sense. But what size you need, what we need to do right now to get rid of the bulk that you have, I think that's where we just have to figure out what's the best.
And I looked at, um, big commercial shredders, and you can buy a commercial shredder for like $400. So I just wondered if, how much you think you actually shred each month?
Ricky, this is a good question for you. He has a lot of shred.
That's a good point, $400 shredder, saved a lot of work.
It was.
Shave it and then just take the bags out of the trash.
But then you got to haul them, because we don't have trash here.
We do know.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, I think so, I saw them. I thought I saw that too. Thought I saw it on the claims. Do we not?
We have what?
Trash pickup?
No, we do not.
But the wastewater treatment facility.
We put it in the back of the dog and they come over and pick it up.
Okay.
We can still do that for $400 bucks, that's not bad.
Or when, I think Matt has the tire fixed on it, if the tires are out, I would drive it in.
But Ricky, what are you having to shred, like, bills?
No, no, it's like old documents from like meetings and.
Anything that comes through your packets that's not necessarily you guys love, but anything extra and anything that he has and he wants to shred, he has been just making a pile. And that's why I asked, I said, Ricky, the answer was, um, he has a lot of shred. It's all.
Like, meaning it's built up or he has it all the time?
But it's so much that you can't keep up with. Well, I have, where I've been going through stuff and the manager office, I have pretty good stats. Um, and I don't know that it all needs to be shredded, but I feel like if it's leaving this building, it probably needs to be shredded.
Why can't we buy a shred? I think, why don't we buy a shred? And see how that works out for a little bit.
Cleaned up first and then.
Yeah.
Get everything cleaned up and then buy a shred.
Don't we need to get cleaned up first, right? I just don't want the old shredder in the meeting room to like catch on fire or something.
One of the things I, I want to bring up is the fact that we need to be scanning and digitizing a lot of these documents. Even the old ones that we're going to be shredding, uh, we need to keep a lot of that digitized so that.
I know, but we have more computers to do it, to be honest. I think Ricky's computer has the most computer computers to do it.
Uh huh.
But my computer, I've been here for five years and I haven't saved a computer since I started.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's time to upgrade.
Our bandwidth is very slow here. I have to, I've been, I've been working on a grant and I have to actually go out to my car to work on it because the Wi-Fi in my car runs faster than, than network would have it here.
Oh, I'll have to look at it. I have to look and see what's going on.
I promise you, I've timed out on my computer every time I just walk up today in my car and I got almost all the way through it.
I would like to say I also have Endeavor at my house and sometimes I get frustrated and turn off my Wi-Fi so that my phone will. I think it has something to do with.
It might be router too.
I think it's when it rains.
Might be router too, I have, I've never had any problem.
We just need to restart. Have you guys got it?
They're still dealing with that TRS any computers that.
It's the next one we have.
And, you know, there's probably cloud-based services that we could use or. Yeah, I think that's a topic for another conversation, but I.
Well, it's 5.25. That's pretty low.
Yeah, that's pretty slow.
Pretty slow. So you can do it pretty quick by your phone and see what it is. And it's not very good, so.
Is that the gas?
I'm guessing it's better in your vehicle.
Well, yeah, because I'm, I'm connected to my Wi-Fi, so there's no way, but when you've got all the kids upstairs with your downstairs, so it slows it down significantly, so, but I agree. I, I agree, I, I, my bulk shred is the way to go, or bulk shred something, have them come out, fix it and let them take it off, offsite, handle it all at once. I've done that as well, like you guys know.
I don't like paying for $75, $80 a month for a box to sit here. I'd rather just pay you guys to get it done and get it out the door than to have it sit here for months.
I agree.
Well, what, what they said is, at first, if we need to empty one a month, they could do that, but then they could go bi-monthly. So it would be half that. Each pickup would be half that.
Does the National Association for Information Destruction, who I've never heard of before, it's $35 per trip? And did that include, um, a receptacle rental or anything? Or is that all they're charging us, $35?
That is the receptacle. I believe it's the 35 week console is what that is.
And that would be potentially every other month that that would be as needed?
Um, I think so. They were only in every four weeks schedule. Um, the other two that were more expensive, you could do it bi-monthly. They said that would be the furthest they would stretch it out with $35.
Well, it says for National Association for Information Destruction, it says can be empty bi-monthly also.
Yeah.
Which one?
Uh, the one I just mentioned, that's $35.
Yeah.
I'm thinking $35 every two months is pretty affordable if you don't fill that up anymore so. And then for your immediate needs, let's get a price on a bulk, get rid of it all at one time.
Race has one too, don't they?
I think they offer a shredding service, waste management, yeah.
We used to be raised out. And they'll bring a truck here and you just load it up.
And does Iron Mountain, do they involve, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I've found Iron Mountain to be very affordable. Now, that said, I work for a very big corporation that has a national account, so we're going to get better pricing. But they were much more affordable than shred it. And shred it is just, I found they're very difficult to work with, so I don't recommend them.
UPS uses Iron Mountain.
They're more protective of your information.
So what do we want to do?
I think she should check about Iron Mountain.
Uh huh.
And get some, yeah, get some pricing and then, and even get pricing on them of their monthly, bi-monthly. Because it might be worth checking out, although that $35 one sounds really good deal.
So do we have a motion to table this for now?
I'll make the motion to table until next month's meeting, after we get a little bit more information and some additional pricing from Iron Mountain.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Says no, no.
Discuss, discuss the increase in the IT services. This is.
$10,000?
Mary Ann.
Well, our, our fee per month went up drastically. Um, you recall that this goal was to have a chemical review prior review. Um, last year, it was okay, we did it on the budget, but I could not remember any, any IT bill without last year. It was not used.
Yeah, I, I know, because I had a conversation with it.
So I already said he did not change.
So, what, what, Kevin? Was that who you talked to then?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Yeah, this is, that's $10,000 already, so. For a year?
Um.
I, I, I just, I'm just kind of perplexed by, I mean, some of the file firewall review is $127. You know, it's just some of this stuff out here.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Um, now that.
Prepare this.
Yeah, no, um, the price now, since it went from 140 for monthly monitoring on the PC, for each computer for ours in the police department is now $555.10 for, um, just monthly monitoring on all computers.
For each computer or for all?
For all, in total.
In total.
For the price of the invoice. Um, and that's why, over the past two months, I've been communicating with Matt and Mary Ann on kind of a direction of where we need to go, because I didn't feel like paying. Because in total, for the past two months, the invoices in total that he's, he's had were $3,000 that were on the claims the past two months.
Yeah, I saw that one last month.
So, um, that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, because I didn't know about the increase either.
I wonder, yeah, should we look at it? IT services again, because, I mean, really, this.
And before I left.
That's a lot to monitor our computers a month.
Yeah.
Before I left for my training, I was trying to find his contract, his certificate of insurance, and there is nothing for his company that I could find in the files. No contract on the computer, not in his file, no certificate of insurance.
Well, I think we should continue our sealed bid process and, you know, put it out there. There's probably people who live in our community who do it, and we just don't know because it's not something we've been looking for. So I'd say we put it on the Facebook, just like we did with the lawn care and so forth, and let Waldron know that we're opening it for bids to make sure that this is the best he can do for us too.
Would you mind me asking, if you ask the best contract person?
Yeah, yeah.
The state, um, the state of Indiana has state bid pricing. There's two different companies that the state has locked in bid pricing for.
Oh.
I believe I did Mary Ann have contact information for those as well.
Awesome.
That way, the state has already negotiated the pricing, which means we're going to get a better pricing because of the state rate. Now, they may not be able to be a smaller company, but it's the place we're looking at because again, if we're going to get a state bid price for somebody.
I just wonder if they're doing the whole state though, if they can come and do, like, you know, my printer isn't talking to the server today, like, what kind of support? It'd be something to look into for sure. But the pricing would be great, I'm sure. So we'll entertain a motion to open the bids for.
I move that we, we, you know. I move that we, you know, seek bids for renewing our IT services.
First, we need to make sure we don't have a contract with these people before we open up bids, right?
Well, how often do you think contracts are signed? Because none of us know about it, so. That's what I'm thinking is that.
And it's kind of been more than two years already because I know that he started, he started like in '22.
As long as it's not something that's worded like, we'll automatically renew at this date without notice or something like that. We just need to, I think, I think it would be prudent just to double-check it, make sure.
Do you think we can vote to open it if we don't have a contract?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Only it's done and she can do something about it?
I'll amend that motion.
Ricky?
What would we do about next month's invoice? Because Matt and I sat together and we're going to need some additional appropriations made because I don't think we're going to have enough to get through the next few months because it's up there.
What, you're talking about just the IT stuff?
Well, Matt, I mean, do you want to add anything?
So in the budget for this year, the IT services for the police department was funded at $3,000 or $500. That includes the IT with WLM and then it goes to MiFi's, my cars and things like that. We're almost through that entire amount because of these increases. So it's March.
And we're about, I'd have to look at our communications, but I think we're at about $3,200 for.
Well, we need to close this and we need to move it off.
Do we have funds available that we can transfer?
Oh, yeah, I believe so.
You have an amount that you think that we need to transfer? Since, why, take us through end of July or end of June?
I have the amount that I sat down with Matt, that we have a clear amount that we can get through July, yes.
So you're going to present us with a resolution next month?
Yeah, but I want to talk with Financial Solutions first and see what they think. That way, we can get a public hearing set and we can get it in the gateway on the additional appropriations line before we present it to the town council in April.
Well, my motion still stands if we go ahead and pursue bids for IT services. We're going to have to, I mean, this is. We're going to have to do something. We can't, we can't keep just paying that kind of price.
So we have a motion to entertain or open sealed bid procedure for IT if we are not in contract. Should I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, five zero. All right. Consider a resolution authorizing the pursuit of funding and engineering associated with the wastewater expansion project. So some daily update here. I sent you guys all a, just a quick email about what's been going on, but Lou and I have had a bunch of conversations in the past week and, you know, we've all discussed and we've set the ordinance that we're going to have to proceed with getting all this together. So Lou, do you want to kind of?
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to get all this business taken care of in this particular item. Those who haven't met Steve Brock, he's your financial advisor actually on issues like this. Some of you have been on the council for a while, know already know him. He's quite adept at what he does, especially in the funding program that he will be mentioning a little later. But I have a handout that's going to probably open the eyes to the realization that we've got to move and we have to move now. Basically, I took your last six months of flow data from the monthly reports that Sean, of his company, prepared and produced for you, that actually show up on the Indiana Department of Environmental Management virtual file cabinet. And so since September, I've graphed that. And if you draw a line, a straight line horizontally across the black at the point three, that's the design average flow of your wastewater plant as it currently exists.
Does this include that drainage issue that we had and they just fixed? I mean, because we had extra flow because of that. And that's why we're up to 95%. And things are going to change since they got that fixed.
They did a little bit, but not enough.
Okay.
I mean, like this month, like when I do my presentation, we're at 111% right now. But that was before, while we were in the client, so that was February. So that was before the drainage got fixed. We have noticed about 20,000, 30,000 gallons less since that took repair. But we might find some more, but it's, you're not going to find anything major other than, you know, that was a big one.
The big issue here is if we don't get started on a project and don't get started right now, when IDEM gets wind and they see that your monthly reports are where they're at, they're going to put you on what's called an early sewer bank warning, meaning that you can't connect new users if you don't increase your plant size. Now, that would have a bad effect on what's continuing to be built at Homestead and any other future developments that you have. So that's what we risk if we don't move this forward. As you alluded to, there was talk last week and this week to the State Revolving Fund, which is the, probably the most beneficial funding agency that you have available to you today. As many of you may recall, you probably don't because you're new to some of this. You were excited when you thought there were a lot of different opportunities available. And if we had time, maybe we could. But you've tried on two attempts at getting income surveys done in this town to qualify for OCR and neither worked. So the CDBG funding for grant is out of the question. Going somewhere like RD and some of the other programs, it's just going to take too long for us. Whereas we're currently in the SRF program and they laid out, Jennifer Pence from the SRF laid out a few of the steps that we could take to get ourselves back into that and that has Steve take you through the pool loan program as soon as possible. And that is, obviously, we're going to have to update the SRF application. The last one we did was, Marley, bless his soul, was still alive and was your president, and Danny was your town manager, and Jim Wisco is your attorney. So a lot of things change in that. We can update that paperwork. We also have to do a memorandum that changes the project scope since we're doing the blowers and the generator and the UV out there presently now. That comes now off. I've got to revise the budget and so forth. And then there's an asset management plan certification that's got to be redone. And there's also a cybersecurity piece to this. But anyway, none of them are unfamiliar to us. We've done them all before and done them for you before. And I would propose that we do those things for you under our on-call. Probably because the cybersecurity piece, we don't know quite where we're going yet, especially if you might be looking at different IT. There is a consultation on the IT piece to do that. It's a rule. In order to get in the SRF program and closing a loan, we have to, we have to do that.
Is that something we have to have in before April 11?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, and we lucked out. Actually, I think Jennifer Pence at the SRF did Steve a big favor because Steve has some influence there at the SRF. For those of you who don't know, he is hired as an outside contractor by them to review other projects due diligence, so. And Steve, you were once with the IURC?
Yes, I was.
So we're supposed to be in by April 1st, but you were able to get us an extension until the 11th, which.
Never seen him do that before, as I said. I'd be really happy to get him done.
Thank you.
So one of the things you had on your list this evening was a resolution to seek funding in engineering services to get this rolling. I think that would be your first order of business.
Does the council have any discussion before we consider that?
I have nothing except that we need to move on this and I move to move as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor of the resolution to proceed with the pursuit of funding of engineering and expansion of the wastewater treatment plant? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, five zero.
Being somewhat aggressive and not wasting any time.
I'm going to give a copy of what he gave you.
Who, I don't know. To you, I don't know. You want this?
Yes. Just curious.
I'm sure we can.
I don't know, Lori might use this against us.
As I normally do, I brought two originals of an engineering services agreement for this project. Basically, as you may or may not be aware, we started design on the expansion some time back and the project was aborted because of a larger pending rate increase. But at this point, we really don't have a choice. So for us to finish and modify the plans that we had put in place before and the specifications and the bid documents accordingly, we would do all that work for you under this agreement. And the fee for doing so is $40,000. We'll also put the project out for bid for the requirements of the State Revolving Fund program and follow all those guidelines, et cetera. We review those bids, do the certified bid tabulation and so on and so forth. Once we get through that portion, that's where Steve then and local council, bond council, who I'm not sure if you were going to use, Adam Sterwol before?
I think I sent you to any copy of the current bond ordinance that was adopted for previous project and that would give you some of your work that you started and if you wanted to use a different bond council, someone would use it and someone would run bond council contracts and kind of what we have before.
I think that that's something that we can, I mean, we've already paid to have the bond ordinance done. So I'd hate to repay for that. Is that after? You're saying we can go ahead and switch to a different bond council at that point? Or like, kind of bid it out or?
Yeah, and I could give you a list of bond councils. Indiana State Revolving Fund requires nationally recognized bond council. And I've got a list of sub-rate firms that meet that qualification I can send to you. You used Tom Pittman from Barnes &amp; Torneberg previously. I know he's got another action going right now with Bose McKenna Diesel Services as well.
And they're part of the recognized group also?
They are the recognized group, yes.
Yeah, was that Adam Sterwol?
I usually deal with pre-degree reefer or done this.
Yeah.
Adam's at Barnes &amp; Torneberg, right?
Yes, he is.
He moves around, so.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Is that something you need from us now or not?
No, and we need to make a decision at some time, sometime fair or square case or I can just help you now, I can contact, come to you over there. Maybe I could send you a list of the firms out there that you could see if somebody wants to lose. Or you could send out a quote. But since Barnes has already done one, I think it's pretty easy for them just to revise.
Well, I did get a quote from Bose McKenna and it was $6.45 per hour, basically, but I don't know what kind of hours it takes.
So what your bond council does, they're required for the State Revolving Fund closing process as well. And there are documents called the bond ordinance and these are the documents that they have to do. They'll give you a quote for the amount of other services that you could compare to, and how to compare, but usually, easily fix. It's usually between $20,000 and $40,000, I think, depending on the language.
Yeah, since we're talking about money like this, if we change or anything, are we going to be paying more? That's what I'm concerned about.
But I, I can't tell, I can't give you a quote for another firm's service.
Right.
If you can, contact them and say, hey, we established this project. You did our, you did our bond ordinance back in 2023. What would be the cost for your firm to do this? And then you can take that and decide what you want to do with it.
Well, I was speaking with a different advisor and they said that you can write language into your contract that says that you're, you know, they put their fees, but not to exceed a certain amount so that there aren't any surprises. So like, you know, if they say they're going to do it for 20 to 40, then not to exceed 30, that you could kind of.
Bond council generally does that and then for some reason you do something additional. They say, hey, for example, generally they give you a quote for just doing the financing this year. If you decide that it's called a bond anticipation, they pay for the fling rate costs. There's additional closing, additional documentation. They'll generally give you an additional quote for that as well. So, you know, it depends, if the work changes, they're going to want to steal or bully for this. That's typical of all of them. They're all very competitive. I say they're, they all pretty much charge about the same thing. The firms on the list are all very good at it and have done it multiple times.
And I can understand that's one to save money too, especially with the costs.
But you don't need a decision tonight.
I don't need a decision.
How soon?
Soon.
Well, we'd like to get the bond ordinance on, if you're not under a agree order, has a 20-day remonstrance period. And what we don't want to do, because some of my clients do, is they put a lot of, you know, then we get in the problem, we're trying to get into closing, you've got that 20-day remonstrance period. Sometimes it closes up, it doubles up the closing. And you've got, you know, the next month or two, I think you'd be fine. We could talk about the State Revolving Fund programs. They've got two programs, one's the pool program, one's the traditional program. We'd love to get in the traditional program, but that's based on environmental need. I don't know how we're going to score environmental need. We'll certainly get in the pool program. If we get in the, in the traditional program, we can close.